So these changes are meant to decrease net assessed value across the board. Stepping in, for example, in 26, the standard deduction will be 48,000. Supplemental homestead is 40%. Then we are stepping down that standard deduction each of the next five years and stepping up the supplemental homestead deduction after that. So that's where we get to that 66.7% deduction by 2031. That's how I'm arriving at, if you're taking out two thirds of it, the tax value will be roughly a third of the property. There is a new supplemental homestead credit. So after the tax bill is calculated, then at the end of the bill, you will receive, can receive a credit of up to 10% or $300 of the bill, whichever is less. So if your bill comes out to be $1,500, it would be, you know, 10% of that. If it was $3,000, that's what equals the 300. So it sort of depends on how that calculation comes out. There's changes to the 65 and over credit. There's changes to disabled homeowner credits. Those were previously deductions. Now those are credits. So again, they are coming off on the bottom line on the end of the tax bill, not on the assessed value. The most likely outcome over time is as net assessed value decreases, that means it will cause your tax rates to potentially increase. The city of Alexandria already has a significantly high tax rate so that virtually probably all of your properties are at their circuit breaker caps. I say that because it's over four, almost $5, and circuit breakers are based upon 1%, 2%, and 3% values. So you can equate that to a $1, $2, $3 tax bill. Anything over a $3 tax bill is when you start hitting the property tax caps. By being at $4, over $4, that means that your, your homes, your 1% properties, your 2% properties, which are second homes, rental homes, agricultural property, and assisted living facilities, those are 2% properties. And then anything else, commercial or otherwise, are considered 3% properties. So all, pretty much all of your properties right now in the city, you would estimate are at those property tax caps. So over time, as your rate, if, if this truly does cause your net assessed value to decrease, your tax rate to increase, it's going to create more circuit breaker loss. It's not going to allow you to have new tax revenue coming into the city for property tax. It will be more circuit breaker loss shared amongst all of the units in the county. Here's an example of that change in homestead deduction over time. So for example, right now, the average home value in the state of Indiana, the average tax assessed value is $240,714. So in '25, you see after the deductions, the standard deductions in the supplemental homestead, the tax value of that home is 120,446. So like I said, roughly 50% of the current gross assessed value. When you get over to 2031, we just, you know, we, obviously we're not taking into account growth here because we want to show the math and how the math would work here. So on this individual home, we're assuming no growth, but obviously we know that's not necessarily the case. But here's how that math works to, by the time we get to no standard deduction and a supplemental home deduction of 66.7% in 2031, that's where we now have a net assessed value of 80%. That's roughly, or, sorry, $80,000. That's roughly a third of the $240,000 gross assessed value. So that's where I say we're seeing this net assessed value potentially over time decrease. And that's just on the 1% properties. On your 2% properties, to remind you again, those are agricultural properties, second and rental homes. So if someone has a lake home or someone has rental homes or properties here in the city or assisted living facilities, those are 2% properties. In the past, there have never been any sort of deductions on 2% properties. They were taxed at their full gross assessed value. Starting in 2026, there will be a, now a deduction in percentage each year. So for example, in 2026, if a piece of agricultural property is worth $100,000, is its assessed value, it will be taxed on 94% of that. There's now a 6% deduction starting this year. And that deduction grows by pretty much 6% each of the next five years to end up at a third, 33.4% of the gross assessed value in 2031. So as where previously, that would have been at 100% of gross assessed value for the next five years, now that will gradually step down to where, instead of being valued and taxed on $100,000, it would be taxed under, please, $66.6, $67.6,000. Again, this would be a decrease in assessed value. There are also changes to business personal property. If there was business personal property put in place before '25, these stipulations do not apply. But any new business personal property, previously there was a floor, you could only reduce that value, you could only advertise that value down so low as part of your business function. Now it can go all the way to zero over time. Again, that business personal property is part of your net assessed value. So if there's a factory or business that has equipment or inventory, it's considered business personal property, is part of their taxable value. Going forward, that amount can actually go down to zero in, in future. Whereas now, there was a floor at which, a 30% floor where that stopped. There was also previously de minimis amounts. So if the amount was valued of their personal property of less than $80,000, that was considered de minimis. Now the amount is less than $2 million. So that, that changes again the makeup and the amount of net assessed value here in the county and across the state ultimately. So for max levy growth, changing your net assessed value does not necessarily change your levy. Levies are separate from assessed value. The two together are used in calculation to determine your tax rate. So your max levy, that max levy growth quotient this year is still 4%. It's capped like it has been the past two years, but they don't currently have it capped going forward past 2026. Were it not capped this year, the growth quotient would have been 5.6%. As a reminder, every community in the state, library, school, township, city, county, had their max levy set by the DLGF back in the 70s. You started with a number based upon your value of your properties back then, and it's grown by a very small amount each year. Some years, half a percent, some years 2%. More recently, it's been in the 5% range. That increase is linked to a 6% rolling average of non-farm income. So as incomes have increased recently, there was a, quite a large increase in 2021. That's kept that calculation high, but the legislature has elected the past three years to vote in a cap on that growth amount of 4%. Like I said, going forward, they don't have a cap on it, but they also don't anticipate that it's going to stay in the 5% range. Once 2021 drops out of the six-year rolling average, they expect to see that amount come back down. Now, this year procedurally, there's nothing that changes your budget. You still have the same public hearing adoption like you've always had, but in a couple of years, you will have to add an additional public hearing. In 2029, as you prepare for the 2030 budget, you will have to have two public hearings. Because the legislature has said that now, after, through the 2030 budget, your property tax levy cannot exceed your previous year's property tax levy. Regardless of what the growth quotient is, it cannot exceed it unless the unit chooses to hold a separate public hearing to adopt an ordinance affirming a tax rate and a tax levy increase. So the, it's the amount of levy. So it depends on what the, what the growth is then, what your net assessed value is, what the levy amount is that comes, that comes out of that. So but going forward, you will have to have two meetings. The first one being to affirm a rate potentially in excess, an amount in excess of the previous year. And then the second one would be the public hearing to comment on the content of the budget or questions about the budget. Like I said, not this year, but keep in mind, the next couple of years, you'll have to add a meeting to your list. So not only did the legislature change items related to property tax. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more slide about property tax. And I'm sorry, this is kind of small. But the, the LSA or the Legislative Services Agency, which works with our state legislature, put out some estimates in April of the additional loss that they expect because of these new credits and deductions I just mentioned. So Alexandria, she said, because you have a somewhat high tax rate, you already have a relatively high circuit breaker loss, 33% to 35%. The LSA numbers are indicating how much more you can potentially expect to lose this year. So I tried to give you a comparative chart here. There in the box at the bottom, the, for each year, the first two columns to the left are what it would be without the passage of SEA1. What are your anticipated revenues? What are your anticipated new revenues? And this is relative only to property tax each year. So this year, they're saying your revenues would be roughly $2,701,449. And keep in mind, this is relative only to your property tax funds. This isn't your lit funds, this isn't your smaller, you know, non-property tax funds. This is only relative to your property tax funds. They were estimating in '26, you would have run in roughly 2.9 million. So that's about a $202,000, almost $203,000 amount of new revenue from property tax to come into the city. However, if you slide on over to the next column, they're saying because of SEA1, you will actually could anticipate revenue of $2,739,150. So when you compare that to the base year of '25, that's roughly an additional $37.7,000 of new revenue. Without the legislation, you would have had almost $203,000 new revenue this year. With the legislation, you'll have roughly $37,000. That's because you have increased circuit breaker loss. So that's, that's circuit breakers, what homeowners don't pay, what taxing units don't collect. So you're, as you're looking at budgets this year, we use this estimate of roughly $165,000 in additional loss on your property tax. Or that's across all funds, that's not just your general fund. That's all of your funds, CCD fund, any of the funds you have that receive property tax. So '27 and '28, obviously those are estimates as well. You know, we're saying for '27, we would expect maybe you'd have a little over 3 million without SEA1. With SEA1, you'll have about 2.9 million. So again, less than expected. Over time, over the three-year cumulative period, altogether, you'd be losing a little over half a million dollars, almost $600,000 in revenue for property tax over this three-year period. Now, keep in mind, there's going to be new estimates, things are going to change. We don't know what the state legislature will do next year. Everything I'm telling you right now could go out the window. We don't know for that for sure. We keep hearing that there's rumors that they're going to go back and do something about the legislation, but we don't know what that is. So for right now, we can only go based upon what they're telling us. So I will say that this year, the DLGF increased their circuit breaker estimates for all the units in the state, and the estimate for yours was roughly another $165,000. So they're, the DLGF, the Department of Local Government Finance, is tying what it's doing pretty closely to these LSA estimates. So unless there's, someplace has significant additional, like new net assessed value, that's the only way that you're really going to gain new revenue in the future. That means new businesses coming to town, new homes being built, agricultural property becoming residential property, those kinds of things. That's the only way that really your levy will grow or your tax rate could potentially decrease in the future going forward. So as I started to say previously, not only did they change property tax, they've significantly changed local income tax potentially as well. Obviously, the difference being property tax, what you pay on your home, your business, your farmland, it, local income tax is on wages. It's on paychecks from individuals across the county, across the state. Every county currently has its own set lit rate that applies to all communities, all individuals within that county. Your local income tax follows you back to where you live. So for example, if you work in Indianapolis but live here, your local income tax comes back to Madison County with you and then gets allocated across all units here in the county. I've tried to show here what your current lit structure is and what the current receipts are that the city is bringing in as far as local income tax. You currently receive certified shares and you receive public safety lit. You also, the past four years, received what's called a supplemental distribution for both of those kinds of taxes. A supplemental distribution means that in your local income tax trust fund at the state, you have hit over the maximum 12 and a half percent reserve they are allowed to keep. So they then dispense the amounts back out to units. How does that happen? That happens from units paying late, like the Department of Revenue receiving revenue after they anticipate. There can be a number of reasons, new employers, employees that come on, new employers that come on. So it just depends over time, it could be interest too, how, how those items come out and then are dispensed back to units. So you can see over the total column there, you had about 1.67 million in revenue from local income tax in '22 and '23. That went up about 200,000, went up a little bit more than that in 2024, then up again a little in '25. Now 2026, we, we do have new estimates for the amounts of certified shares and the amounts of public safety, but we do not know what your supplemental will be or if you'll get one. We won't know that till May of next year. So that's why you see a decline there from 2025 total to 2026 total, because we don't know what that supplemental amount will be. And just as a refresher, certified shares goes in your general fund. It can be used for any purpose of the city, it's not restricted. Public safety lit can only be used for police or fire or public safety. It can't be used to put in sidewalks, it can't be used to hang street signs. It's for police and fire support only. The only thing this chart does not include is something called PTRC or Property Tax Replacement Credit. Madison County uses Property Tax Replacement Credit to somewhat dull the effect of circuit breaker. So they're using local income tax and it comes back to the units looking like property tax. So when you get your property tax settlement, part of that is local income tax. On everyone's tax bill, there's a place where it says what the local tax credits are. That amount then comes back on that tax bill. It gets divided up amongst the taxing units. And you don't really see it on a separate report. You don't see a separate amount that says Alexandria got X amount in PTRC. So I don't have that included here because I don't know. I will say however, that as a county in 2025, Madison County will have roughly $17 million in PTRC. That is, again, lessening the impact of circuit breaker for all units in the county, whether it's a township, whether it's a city, whether it's a fire, fire territory or fire district, library, that's, that's helping. So if, if it weren't for PTRC, you would currently have a higher, historically had higher circuit breaker loss than you do already. So as the county's current rate is 2.25%, you can see there by type, it's 1% to certified shares, half a percent to public safety. The county has two tenths of a percent that goes to jail lit, and then that PTRC is half a percent. Again, when you, if you look at your wage statements, you'll see a county tax line. This is that county tax, this is the local income tax. But in 2028, this all goes away. In 2028, we have a whole new lit scheme. There will no longer be separate public safety, there will no longer be, longer be separate certified shares. The county council will be responsible for adopting most times of lit. So there's a county services expenditure rate up to 1.2% that the county keeps for its functions. There's four tenths of a percent that the county can adopt for fire and EMS, not police. That gets distributed to municipal fire departments, fire districts, and fire territories automatically. And if the county decides, it also can go to township fire departments and volunteer fire departments. It's distributed based upon service territory and population. There is something called a non-municipal lit, which is distributed based upon type. Non-municipal units are considered to be townships, libraries, it can be an airport or a conservancy district. It just depends on the types of units that are in the county. So even though we say there's a max of two tenths of a percent, no one type of unit can receive more than 0.05. So if all they have is libraries, the maximum amount they can put in is 0.05. They can't do the full 0.2. So then for the municipalities, if the municipality is under 3,500 people, the county is responsible for adopting their lit as well. So that would be for anyone under 3,500 in population as a group, the AGI is calculated based upon the full county AGI less the AGI of communities that are over 3,500. So if you have a number of smaller towns, you're going to pull out Anderson, you're going to pull out your, your AGI. So anyone that lives in those smaller towns can potentially have a different tax rate. There can be a number of different tax rates under this new scheme. Currently, there's one lit tax rate across the county. If you have, for example, four municipalities that are over 3,500 and each one of them were to adopt a separate tax rate, not at the max, depending upon the address of where an individual lives, their tax rate could be different. If on one side of the street, it's Town A and the other side of the street is Town B, that will divide those tax rates. It's going to be based upon where you live. I think HR departments across the state are cringing. We'd have to keep track of this and to have the tables created to maintain this. The Department of Revenue has told us so far, they do not have AGI calculated based upon municipality. So we have made estimates of what, because you are over 3,500 in population, so you would be eligible to adopt your own rate of up to 1.2%. Now, the max rate for anybody in the county will be 2.9. You don't have currently a special lit in place. So unless the county were to put special legislation lit in place between now and 2028, that wouldn't be considered. So 2.9% would be the max rate for anyone in the county. Said your current rate is 2.25. So based upon information in the 2020 census, we would estimate that potentially Alexandria could adopt up to 1.7 million in lit. But if you look at that table on the page before, you're currently bringing in more than that. So your lit, you know, granted, could your AGI go up between now and '28? If you have more AGI, yes, you could. It could go down also. We don't know exactly what will happen between now and then. So we'll have to keep tabs on the AGI between now and summer of 2027 because you'll have to adopt by October 1st. If you are adopting your own separate rate, you have to adopt by October 1st via ordinance. After 2031, you have to do it every year. You get the first three or so years sort of to relax and sort of recover from the, everything else that's been going on. But then by 2031, you have, even if you adopt the same rate every year, even if you adopt the same 1.2% every year, you have to do it every year. The county council would be in the same situation. They will have to revisit and do all of their individual types of lit every year as well. So I know there's a lot to this legislation. I would just say, and keep your eyes and ears open as information comes from AIM, as information comes from the county about, as things are changing for the next couple of years, there's, there's a lot to pay attention to going forward. And in the past, it's sort of been in place for a long time, that then has changed. Now there's a lot of new things coming up in the next couple of years. So we'll move over to the next, the budget overview presentation now. We'll talk about the budget that has been prepared so far. So I can speak to a bit of, we provided Darcy with revenue estimates for each of your funds based upon what we knew about max levy growth quotient, based upon circuit breaker estimates, based upon lit estimates that we were able to receive from the state. We provided her for each fund what we thought were appropriate conservative revenue estimates for the coming year. She has then provided expense lines. We have that document here in your draft of the, the '26 budget. You can look at, we have not published that on Gateway yet. It is scheduled to publish on October 6th. So you have to, so actually, meetings on October 6th. So we have to publish it on September 26th. I apologize. The public hearing will be October 6th. So you have about 11 days to look at the detail, ask questions of your clerk treasurer or of your department heads and determine the content of the budget and see, you know, what, what exactly is there. So the things we know this year, obviously, as I mentioned previously, we know that that 4% cap was in place. So your maximum levies went up by 4% this year. Motor vehicle highway and local road and street, which are used, obviously, part of gas tax revenue. We see very little change year over year in those funds. Those revenues stay fairly flat, maybe a 1% change, one to two, one and a half percent change year over year. And I know, you know, obviously expenses grow probably faster than that, but unfortunately, those amounts come in, not, not a lot of growth each year. Now, your motor vehicle highway fund is split into two, a motor vehicle highway restricted, which is for capital type projects only, preservation and maintenance of road surface only. Then you have an unrestricted fund that can be used for other items, personnel, benefits, small items, vehicles, things like that. You also have some, you put property tax towards your motor vehicle highway fund as well. So you have some more revenues there that you use for, in support of your street department. So your lit certified shares, those estimates came out August 14th this year. Your lit certified shares receipts went up about 5.8% for 2026 over 2025. Your public safety went up about 4.1% over 2025. We do not have net assessed value information from the county yet. Normally, that deadline to have everything turned into the state for net assessed values is August 1st. This year, most of them are nowhere near, the middle of September. Because of the new, everybody's software had to get rewritten real quickly between April and, you know, 1st of August. I know one vendor in particular, they had it, they thought it was good, then they went and checked it and found there were errors. So people had to unsubmit, they resubmitted. You know, there's, there's a lot of people right now in, in calculation of net assessed values. So I can't give you an exact idea on your tax rate right now. I can give you an estimate. But because we don't know your actual net assessed value for next year yet, we can't get, we can't pull that estimate of the tax rate in any closer. So just for example, here, this is your 2025 property tax levy information. So you had a certified levy amount last year of around $4.2 million. This is the, these are the amounts that were approved by the DLGF during last year's budget process. Circuit breaker amounts aren't technically actually calculated until tax bills are calculated. So that means this time last year, we didn't know if circuit breaker for sure. I gave you an estimate. The numbers that are here are actual circuit breaker amounts that were calculated during the property tax bill calculation process this year. So on $4.2 million, you lost this year for '25, like $1.44 million in circuit breaker loss. The total circuit breaker was about 2.76, or total property tax levy for the year was about 2.76 million. So in this case, last year, the growth was 4%. Your certified amounts went up 4% over your previous year certified amounts. Your CCD, that's the only one that is outside of your max levy growth. That one is based upon a straight rate. You have a rate of 5 cents per $100 of net assessed valuation. So as or if net assessed value grows, that's how you receive more revenue. So I don't remember what the amount was in '24, but there was a 12% increase for your base amount there in levy in 2025 for your CCD fund. So here we have estimates for your levies for 2026. So again, we've estimated the levy based upon allocating the entire max levy to general motor vehicle highway and park. And then because I don't have net assessed value, we have a flat-lined amount there for your CCD fund. The first column of circuit breaker loss is what we would call your normal circuit breaker. That's the normal 1%, 2%, 3% caps. That next column, the 165,000, is what I mentioned in the previous presentation. It's because of the new deductions. So now your total circuit breaker is closer to 1.67 million. So this is where we're estimating you'll bring in about 2.7 this year. In this case, I showed your net levy change based upon the previous year's net levy. So net levy meaning levy less circuit breaker, less SEA1, Senate, Senate Bill 1 and circuit breaker. So net levy meaning levy less circuit breaker, less SEA1, Senate, Senate Bill 1 and circuit breaker. So this is when I said you're actually bringing in less revenue this year, that's what those negative 2% are. Even though the levy grew by four, because of circuit breaker, it's going to be 2% less than it was in 2025. So here's the property tax rate comparison, and this is just your, that means you're the city of Alexandria. Your property tax rate in 2025, it was 2.9156. If we knew what the net assessed value was, I can give you a better idea. If your net assessed value increases by more than 4%, this tax rate would go down from the 2.91. Instead, because it's flatlined, we're showing that the tax rate will go up. That's because it's net assessed value, or the levy grew by 4%, net assessed value grew by zero. So it's somewhat, you're not spreading it out. The, the growth is not being spread out. The growth is being absorbed, absorbed by currents. That's why the rate goes up. So that's about a $3 rate. And now remember, your rate is combined with other rates in the county. The county's rate, school's rate, libraries rate, township's rate, to determine what the rate is on an actual home. That's where I mentioned earlier, in the city of Alexandria, the total district rate is over $4, almost $5 this year. It's 4.97, I think. So, and it's possible that if other units have changes that you don't have, the total district rate could go down, even if your individual rate goes up. It just depends, because every, every unit is kind of different. So your rate, once we find out what the net assessed value is, we can update that and give you a better idea of what your tax rate might be. Unfortunately, depending on how long it takes the county to get things together, we may not know technically until the 17th of each notice comes out later this fall. I've given you a snapshot here. Always a good idea to look at historical budget performance as you're looking at current budgets. So I've given you a snapshot here of 2024, what your actual receipts and disbursements were. So the first column is the beginning cash, the column with the green header is what you brought in. The yellow, the peach colored header is what went out. Not to say that that was your budget, it's what you actually spent in '24. Because things change, maybe you don't spend your whole budget, maybe you have additional appropriations and you spend more than your budget. It's what you, but this in case, in this case, it's what you actually spent. Then you have an ending cash column, then a net, net cash flow. That's sort of the comparison between what you brought in and what went out. So if it's red, that means you spent more than you brought in. If it's not red, that means that you brought in more than you spent for that fund. And then there's an operating balance column. That's indicative of how much cash reserve you have. So at the end of '24, you had enough cash reserves in your general fund to support about 50% of the year, or around 6% of your expenses for the incoming year. We recommend that number not go below 15%, especially if you're paying salary and wages from a fund. But in this case, your general fund, 15 to 50 is usually, are usually the rails, the guide rails that we say to try to keep your funds within those ending balance percentages. Sometimes with capital projects, it's more because maybe you're accruing revenues for a project at a particular point in the future. So in this case, you can see you do have some funds there in the net cash flow column where you did use more than you brought in for the year. It's not to say you couldn't fund it. You had cash reserves available to fund those items. The only two exceptions being in '24 were your slot machine wagering and your sanitation. Because those are pink in the ending cash balance column, that means that those funds were negative at the end of 2024. We strongly recommend you not continue with funds with negative balances. If you think about each fund is kind of like its own little checkbook. There's a big pool that's your bank account. Each fund is its own little checkbook, cash coming in, cash coming out for specific purposes. So if you are overspending on slot machine wagering for whatever reason, either it's you had an unexpected expense of some sort, or your revenues weren't as high as anticipated, you ended up now with a negative balance, like your checkbook for slot machine wagering is overdrawn. So either the recommendation is you would cut your spending this year, or, you know, in 2025 to try to, if your revenues don't go up, that's really the only way, you know, to, the quickest way to get back to a zero or positive balance would be to decrease spending in 2025, or shift spending to where there are other funds. Your sanitation fund has been somewhat of a long-term issue. We talked multiple years about what needs to be done with fees on that fund. But in this case, that large of a negative balance in your sanitation fund is in effect giving you a false idea of how much you have in your general fund. Because since it's one big bank account and everything's in there together, that negative 281,000 against, you know, a, a general fund balance of 1.94 million, that 1.94 isn't really the actual amount you have available because of the, that negative funding. You have some other negatives too. You have some negatives in your utilities, which are separate from your civil funds. But we need those, you know, think about addressing those as you're finishing out this year. How we can make, either make up in some expenses, or if we have to actually use money from the general fund to fix those so that you're no longer experiencing funds that are of the negative balance. The next one we have is your 2025 estimated. So when I, we did the same process last year with Darcy, gave you estimated revenues. She prepared budgets that were more or less equal to those revenues. In some cases, like for example, you have a, a planned additional appropriation potentially from your motor vehicle highway fund. So we've included that. So it's not only the approved budget from last year, but it's an additional appropriation. If there was one, it would be potentially encumbrances if those were there. But your, once your budget is approved, your budget's pretty much set. However, things can change in receipts. This time last year, we didn't know that you would get a lit supplemental distribution this year. So if you look at your lit public safety, your receipts now are estimated for this year at 1.12 million. Your expenses are estimated at 9.65. So you're actually better than balanced currently in that budget. You were probably exactly balanced last year. But now you're better than budgeted balanced because you had some additional receipts come in. To know whether you use those for a certain purpose this year, whether you have an additional appropriation, whether you choose to carry those over to the next year, that's up to council and department heads to determine what they do with that. Again, you'll see, we still have those two funds floating there with negative balances. You have some funds that you're planning to use potentially more than the budget, like that motor vehicle highway is one that came up because of the additional appropriation. You're now like a negative $17,000 cash flow there, but you still have enough to fund it. You just would be using reserves for that. Oh, I see one I did not highlight red. It should have been red. That's fire non-reverting. That fire non-reverting needs to be fixed as well for 2025. That one, we're estimating negative. So if your expenses come in less than planned, or your revenues come in more than planned, you know, these are just estimates between now and the end of the year. We don't know. You have another four months to get to the end, three and a half months to get to the end of the year. So we don't know exactly where those will end up. And then for your 26 estimated budget, right now, we're showing net, net cash flow pretty much zero, except for one small fund, that being slot machine wagering. But again, if we, you know, compare that budget down a little bit to try to work back towards zero, that would be advised. Sanitation, short of increasing fees, you're not going to be able to fix this one just by decreasing your, your expenses. So currently, you know, all these budgets are in a balanced position. You have, your operating balances are within where they should be, except for, again, that fire non-reverting, the sanitation and the slot machine wagering, everything else is where you would expect to see them based upon past performance and anticipated expenditures. The next few slides, kind of boring, they're ending balances, estimated ending balances, cash funds. Since I've shown you 24, 25 and 26, we've gone back one year further here to show where 23 was, 23 through 26. The, the blue bar is your ending cash balance. The green bar is that 15% sort of guardrail that I talked about, sort of don't go below that. So in this case, this fund has been above the 15% for a while. Next is your motor vehicle highway. This combines your two motor vehicle highway funds together. And because the DLGF is sort of an odd situation, the DLGF considers them one fund, even though they're technically two funds on your books. But this one has also been above 15%. Next is your park and recreation. This is another one of your levy funds that is also above 15%. As is CCD. CCD may be slightly higher, depending upon what that actual net assessed value comes in for the year. Lit public safety at one point was below, but now it's somewhat rebounded and is back up above the 15% line. And then sanitation is, they're setting negative below the 15% line. Always continue to monitor expenses in your main operating funds. So monthly, you should be, you know, looking at budget actual performance. Is some line overspent? Is something being spent in, in excess of what has been approved? As you're making decisions this year, consider the long-term impact on future cash flows. Because as I talked to you about this legislative situation, it's potential over the years that you will see more circuit breaker loss and less revenue. So if you're considering increases in either whether it's salary and wage or benefits, or contracts, or vehicles, or leases, and what, you know, think about what those look like down the road. How do those impact future expenses? And maybe this is when you have to start really prioritizing expenses. If maybe you can't fit everything in, unfortunately, anymore, and those coming together, working as a group to determine what the city's priorities are, that's, this may be the time really to do that. And then again, correcting those negative fund balances would be one of our other concluding comments going forward. And don't continue to approve expenses from those funds that are already negative. If, if there's something in slot machine wagering that you need to approve, and you can't, because it's still, it's already negative or it's still negative, look at other funds, look at other sources. If you have to do an additional to cover it, you may have to do an additional to cover it. But again, I know it's a lot of information. Any questions before we take a look at your budget? Your actual budget. Okay. So we have the third document that we prepared for you is the draft of your budget. This is just a printout of all your budget forms on Gateway. So we have to kind of jump through a couple of things to get to the line item detail of the budget. So first, the first thing there is your Form 3. This is what announces to the public what you're seeking for budgets and levies and tax rates for the incoming year. This is what gets posted on September 26th. This is what is available to the public. They can go look at it, see what it, see what the numbers are, and then can come ask questions about it at your public hearing potentially. The next thing is your budget Form 4. That is the ordinance that is signed by council at your adoption hearing later in October. These are the final amounts. So it's possible that you could have amounts that are different. You could have one advertised amount, you discuss something, you cut it, and then you have a lower amount on your adopted. Always remember, advertised is the highest. You can't, you should not be going with budgets higher than your advertised. If anything, you can go lower, but not higher. That's why you always want to make sure you have levies advertised correctly, your CCD levy advertised correctly. Because it, you get stuck when we find out what your actual property tax levy is. You can't request a higher rate or a higher amount to make up for something that was an oversight during the original budget preparation process. So the next section then is the detail of the budget that was provided by the clerk treasurer's office. This is in order by fund, by DLGF fund number, and then internally within the fund by department. So your, your general fund is departmentalized. You have the clerk treasurer department, mayor's department, a city council, town department, planning and zoning, a board of public works, town hall, law department, city attorney, building maintenance, fire department, police department. So even though you have that public safety lit, not all of the expenses can be paid from that. So you have the funds in your general fund. The general fund is generally the largest and most active fund in any municipal unit for most of the, the expense and receipt traffic goes in and out of, because it is a general purpose fund. So that's, first we have the detail, like I said, of your general fund. Then the other ones, the far left column shows what fund you're looking at. And then on the far right-hand side, you have a published column, which that's the Form 3 information, and then adopted column. So some of these items, there, there's zeros in them. They weren't all filled out. The things on the previous page are, because over time, you have been able to move expenses that were traditionally in your general fund to your public safety. You couldn't move everything there, but you have moved some things. So that was one of the first things I noticed. There were some zeros there in your police department. So you're, you've moved those expenses to lit public safety. So there's no longer a number for them in your general fund. So this is something, you know, you're going to want to take some time and look at, ask some questions. I don't know, Darcy, do you provide them budget to actuals so they can see what they spent so far in things this year? Because that would, that's, you know, one thing to look at. What, what have we spent so far? Do these numbers look feasible for next year? So I will, you know, again, we don't have every fund included here. The funds that are included, if you look on either the Form 3 or the Form 4, it lists the ones, so you don't have to look through the whole, like, you say, oh hey, there's motor vehicle highway, I want to look at motor vehicle highway, I want to look at road and street, I want to look at CCD. You can see those are the funds that we have included for your budget for the coming year here. There's also, after the Form 1 information, there's detail on the revenue estimates that we provided. Then the revenue estimates are your miscellaneous revenues. So it kind of looks like the same setup as your expenses, but it's called a Form 2. Looks slightly different, shows each type of local or miscellaneous revenue. And this budget process is an 18-month process. It's not just next year's 12 months. The DLGF first figures out, can they afford everything they're planning to spend between now and the end of the year? So they look at your June 30th financials. We provide them information on what we expect receipts to be between now and the end of the year. Is that enough? They'll determine to fund your budget between now and June 30, or December 31st, I'm sorry. And then the revenues for next year, will that be enough to support your budget for next year? Now, the DLGF does not make determinations on the content of your budget. They don't say, hey, you're spending too much on insurance. Hey, the salary seems too high. They only look at the bottom line. They look at how much you're spending and can you afford it? So I've heard units often say, well, the DLGF will tell me if we can't give raises. No, the DLGF won't tell you if you can't give raises. That's, that's up to you to determine whether or not you give raises. The DLGF will let you spend money till you hit zero. They don't intervene till you hit negative one, and then they cut your budget by a dollar, or $1,000 or $500,000, or whatever it need to be, would need to be cut by if you were spending over. And that is on their oversight funds. Their oversight funds are your motor vehicle highway, your general, your park, your casino riverboat, if you have one of those funds, your rainy day fund. They don't cut your local income tax fund. They'll cut your, like I said, your CCD. They won't cut your fire non-reverting. Those are considered home rule funds. So the DLGF will only cut those levy funds, motor vehicle highway, local road and street, and casino riverboat. They won't even cut your slot machine wagering fund. But if they're going to cut, those are, there's only certain ones that they will cut.
Can you say that again, those, which one?
Sure. It's general, motor vehicle highway, park, CCD, local road and street, casino riverboat, and rainy day. Also, the, the quick and easy way to see that is look at your budget order from last year. In general, the funds that are listed on your budget order are the oversight funds for the DLGF. So I believe your fire, police pension funds show up there as well, even though that's a little bit different situation, because they're not funded with property tax, they're funded with cigarette tax and based upon retirees and it's a slightly different situation. But in general, the ones I gave you are the ones that you can control the budget on most readily, and that the DLGF would most likely cut, if, if you can't fund it. Like we said, you know, you have, you have budgets in there right now. They're balanced. Just some issues with negative balances on some of them, but they're the home rule funds. So that's the end of the information I brought for you this evening. Questions or comments from council? Anything you didn't hear me talk about that you have questions about, or, but hey, I need to know this?
I don't know if this is appropriate.
I don't know if this is appropriate, or e- even if this makes sense. Okay. So sorry about this. Sure. But if you did a percentage of like. What, what cuts or where we're at below, what would that estimate be? That makes sense?
It does. I mean. I'm hesitant to say you should cut your budgets by 3%. Your budgets are all funded right now.
Yes, I understand that.
But, but. You know, we're looking at. A one to 2% cut in revenue, probably another cut in revenue the next year. We don't know what the cuts in revenue are going to look like in 28. So. But you know, this time everything plays out for sure with lit. So maybe not cutting, but do you, you know, where, where are you?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. Yeah. What makes, you know, to look at.
Where are you, where are you increasing? What, you know, what has to be increased? That's what I was talking about developing priorities.
Yes.
Um, something's increasing. It's, you know, maybe more. $10,000 more than it was last year. Why does, why, is there something else we can do or some, some other source of funding we can use for that?
Yeah, makes sense.
So that's, that's probably the most logical way to look at that.
Thank you. So as we look over these, then we reach out to Darcy and one another on.
Yes.
Where we think, we have a question like, okay, this is only this that we see. We're afraid that it might increase to this.
Yeah.
Where do we pull from?
Yeah, or you know. Is this enough this year? What? You know, cause. If you're going to undertake a service or a position or a contract, you want to make sure you have enough allowed for things as well. And does that make sense in the scheme of things? You know, there's, there's just a lot of different sides to look at an expense from. Um, you know, why are we doing this? Are we spending this because we've always spent this? Is there a better provider for this function? Is there another way we could provide this function? Those kinds of questions are always good ones to keep in back of your mind as well. Anyone else? For Baker and Kelly?
Thank you.
It is always helpful.
It's a great color.
Oh, thank you.
Get that color.
If there's no other questions. Except that I'm going to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Right. Thank you, guys.